Right, alright. Dear Lord, we thank you for tonight and thank you for the opportunity to get to swearing new members and do the business of the city, just be with us and guide us and lead us to the best decisions for everybody. Your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approve the minutes from the law as presented. Has anybody got any thing they need to discuss about the previous minutes?
Oh, a motion.
Motion.
Second.
David, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Delmar, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, okay. To certify the election of April eighth, two thousand and five. Do you read this whole thing?
You have the certification. From the county and someone.
You should have it in your packet.
Someone needs to read it.
Okay. This is to certify that the enclosed is a true, correct, and complete abstract of all the votes cast in the twenty twenty-five municipal election as shown by the returns made by my office, by the judges of the election, and as verified by the verification board as approved in section one-one-five dot five-zero-seven R S M O. First ward, Alderman, a two-year term, two-year term, vote for one. Don Crem, regular votes sixty-seven, absentee votes six, for a total of seventy-three, there were no write-ins. Second ward, Alderman, two-year term, Dot Critsizer, regular votes twenty-three, absentee seven, for a total of thirty. Shelby Middleton, regular votes twelve, absentee two, for a total of fourteen votes, there were no write-in votes. Third ward, Alderman, two-year term, Delmar Strange, regular votes sixty-one, absentee votes nine, for a total of seventy, there were no write-ins. Edina, question, yes, regular votes a hundred and twenty-three, absentee votes twenty-two, for a total of a hundred and forty-five votes. Noes, regular votes were fifty-six, absentee were eight votes, for a total of sixty-four. In testimony whereof, I hereby to set my hand and affix the seal of the county commission at my office in Edina, Missouri on this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-five, Marlene Spory. Their motion to certify that election.
I make a motion.
David?
I'll second it.
And then a break. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now we have an oath of office, for would be for Dot.
Delmar and Donny.
He's just gonna stand right here.
Alright, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office that you have been elected, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the fourth class and the ordinances of the city of Edina, and will faithfully demean yourself while in office?
Aye.
So, now.
Love them, guys.
We're taking a recess if you notice.
Okay.
Because, because you know, we have an outgoing member, which is Mark.
That's not here.
That's not here, and then.
Go get some treats.
You get a seat down here.
Well, this was Mark's seat.
So, you know, if Mark were here, we'd have a hunch and a flick or something. But since he's not, I guess.
Alright, so we can call the meeting back to order. Alright. Now, the next order is to appoint, with board approval, Kathy Corr, city collector, Margaret Gibson, city clerk, Peggy Collins, city treasurer, Brenda Swedberg, city attorney, Andrew Bosker, city prosecuting attorney, Kurt Goodwin, emergency management director. Is there a motion to accept these appointments?
I make a motion.
Delmar? Is there a Dot? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. Okay, now we get to elect one of our own as mayor pro temp for the term of one year. Do we have any nominations for pro temp?
I nominate Dot.
Okay, Delmar nominated Dot for mayor pro temp.
I'll vote, I'll motion.
Yeah, everybody's good. All in favor?
You're good, yeah, make you feel you're portin' up there.
Poor God. Okay.
I guess keep Linda healthy, that's what we're.
Yeah, you haven't had to fill in yet.
Don't say that.
Well, we made it all year.
So, we did, and now that Mark is no longer here, he was one of the ones that was authorized to sign checks.
Okay.
We need, I would say we just need one more.
Mayor and Dot and Delmar, and then we need one more board member to. Sign checks.
Anyone around?
It's just usually during the council meetings, we'll sign a bunch of checks. During the week and off times, if she needs checks signed, don't care, don't actually come in. Don. We need somebody to nominate, Don. David?
David nominated Don.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Either one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Got your first big job there.
Put your boots on.
Yeah.
You have a short name, but sometimes it's a check for two.
Employee health insurance renewal.
So, I really thought Peggy was gonna be here, but anyway.
Thank you.
Maybe she's here.
Oh, okay, we did receive notification, it's time for a renewal with annual crossroads yield and it's eight point six percent increase.
That's not horrible.
I checked with Peggy, she said she had budgeted.
I think we're gonna be pretty close, but we won't have to do anything about it.
Yeah, so we need to know, tonight though, because I've got to tell the insurance people, so.
Renew it?
If, to renew it, yeah, we could use a motion to renew our current plan.
Make that motion to renew the health insurance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Delmar, all in favor? Alright. Do you have any citizens that want to comment?
Um, I probably should be saying things, or the Easter egg hunt here in town will be on Saturday at eleven in the morning, if you've got littles that you want to bring up, it's thousands of eggs, there's gonna be all kinds of prizes. The Minister Alliance is taking it over, they're really doing it up. The Bright Features Fishing Day is coming up. Yeah, I'll give you more of an update at the May meeting, I believe it's at the end of May, so we're in pre-registration for that now, so if you have littles who want to fish, Rick, sign them up so they can get a T-shirt. Free T-shirts for pre-reg, although everyone can come. There is probably a pile more I should be saying, but I can't, it's. If there's an egg hunt in emergency, I'll just let you know, but that's, that's all I can think of right now.
Alright. Peggy. You're up.
Did you have any questions on the treasures report? I'm gonna let you discuss.
Alright.
Because you know what you're talking about.
On the demolition of the water plant, I got a bigger machine for a weekly rate, it'll run us forty-eight eighty, then the breaker is four thousand. I don't know what that figures out, but that's.
Fifty-two.
Short of nine thousand.
Under nine thousand, yes, but I think that's a cheap way to go. But we'll have to have a truck here, so we got twenty-five hundred, three thousand to have a truck here, and that's here to come, and it's a bigger machine, so it has to be permanent, so I just don't let them do it. They said twenty-five to three thousand to do that. Then we'll have to have insurance, and I called Hawkins, and she said that to put the machine on her for that week was maybe like six hundred dollars or less, six fifty somewhere near, just to make sure if something happened to the machine, it would be covered. And one thing that I, we'll have to have a couple dumpsters to put the roof and stuff into.
Which we have, right, or would you need bigger ones? Like the big Victory roll-off dumpsters?
Well, that's gonna be big material stuff, our dumpster ain't big enough.
Yeah, okay.
Said you gotta bid on hiring somebody just to do it?
A lot of times forty-seven thousand, and I figured after COVID, it'd be sixty, seventy thousand now, probably.
So this would just be to rent the equipment to do it ourselves, correct? What's the budget look like, Peggy?
We can do it, we just need to amend, amend the budget, but there's funds available.
Okay.
So, Rick, are you the one that operating the machines?
Well, I'm planning on, I got Mike, and he's gonna have three or four, three hours or so in the morning to get things done, and I figured I'd run the machine in the morning.
Okay, you with some.
Then let him run it until.
So we probably need to cover work, let's call upon him.
Just so if something would happen.
Right.
So, yeah, because he can't be employed by the city.
No.
But we could cover the insurance.
Yes, so if you would get hurt out there, you're covered and not on your own.
For that period of time.
Well, if we didn't, you'll get hurt.
I ain't gonna get hurt, I guess, like ahead of time.
So, what timeframe were we looking at doing this?
Well, I'm hoping to do it in three days, and it'll cut the rate down.
No, I mean, what, when are you wanting?
Next year, or?
Next week, or?
Before the streets and everything, I'd like to do it probably in June, if I can. In oh-three, no, I'm gonna take a week off to try to get this done.
How much would the total be, did you say?
For a weekly deal, it'd be right around nine thousand for the.
The whole thing.
For the machine, then you got, and those, just figure, this is high, three thousand for the truck and to get it here and to come.
So the department of sales said that around fourteen.
Do you know how much the dumpsters would run? Do you have any idea?
I didn't call, there's a guy.
How much do we pay for them for city cleanup?
I'd have to look it up, it's probably over a thousand, I suppose.
I wanted to say they were eight hundred and something.
Well, it's, it's so much.
Yeah.
And with your stuff in it, obviously.
So if we have to.
So much is said, I mean, we pay so much to be said.
If we have a bike over there, we could cram them, we could get them one in one dumpster, I'd say, if not, we'll just set it off side, and then when he comes to dump it, just leave it, and we can do it a second time.
One dumpster would get it all?
Just the roof, everything else is gonna go down in.
Right, you go, and same thing, you go down below.
Yeah, it'll all go in there, we'll probably have to haul some in, or take some off the hill or where to fill it.
Yeah, level that hill off a little, that wouldn't be a bad deal, anyway.
Yeah.
So nine, nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's right.
Probably about fifteen to sixteen to get.
Yeah, the insurance and.
Fifteen to sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen to sixteen, so you probably oughta go with sixteen.
Yes, just in case, because there's always something that comes up, and if not, then we can just put it back in the.
That's right.
Keeping in mind how much you'll be saving on Ricky Yocum for a week.
Yes, yes.
Well, it's gotta be cleaned up, I can't take care of the rest of this town when we got something setting up the roofs.
I drove by it the other day and had not been by it, and I thought, it's really deteriorating fast.
Roof's gone on.
Yeah, yeah, the doors are just swinging open.
Okay, well, the money's in the budget, and Rick's willing to do this.
Well, it's not, you can amend the budget.
Do we need to wait till, like, June, amend it, or do it now?
No, go ahead, and if you're approving a project.
Go ahead and amend it.
Go ahead and amend it, so we're, I'm gonna take a week off.
Okay, is there a motion for Rick to proceed with making all the arrangements to tear down the old water plant?
And to amend the budget.
We have to do two different things.
Two different things.
Okay, all in favor of Delmar? Then is there a motion to amend the budget in the amount of sixteen thousand, for Rick to be able to do the.
I make the motion, amend the budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Go for it.
I'll get fried, I almost figured something was.
For the budget, it'll be amending the.
It'll be the capital improvement.
In sixteen or fifteen? How many thousand? Sixteen, sixteen, okay.
You can always put it back, right?
It'll be capital improvement.
For something.
Okay.
And then, Mike, did you want to go ahead and talk about yours also? While we're spending.
While we're amending the budget. We had some pump problems, um, middle of last month. We lost one, got some debris stuck in it, and we sent it to Van Venter, Co-Gent. They handle all of, they're the ones that did the inspections and everything, and it's gonna cost eleven thousand and seventy-six dollars to fix, or we can have a new one for eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. The one that's in there's like fourteen years old. It's over fifty percent. I talked with Peggy, and we both agreed that new is better, just for the simple fact it's fourteen years old, and we're just repairing an old pump. This one's gonna come with a soft start, start and stop, anti-clog, if it gets something in it, it will reverse itself, spit it out, and try and go again, which is, we don't have that cap, used to only have, get that capability if you change controls and inside the building, you have to put soft starts, and that's really expensive stuff to put in. Now they're putting it in the pump, it's easy, they found out it's easy to do that, so they're, they're putting the soft starts, and they're reversing all that stuff in the pumps themselves. And this one, the new pump would be that, they can increase the horsepower with those by hooking them up to a computer now, and decrease the horsepower, they can run it through maintenance cycles and stuff like that, so that's kind of what I'm here to ask for. Shortly after that, we had a power surge and blew one of the mini casts, but since we had one of the pumps out, because we took the using that one, so if we get a new pump, we need another one of those, it's another eight hundred dollars on top of that eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy. But he sent the review sheet of what they did to the pump and what all needed to be replaced.
That is something we can request to get some of our funds released from.
Oh, yeah, for the repairs.
Right.
Is there any changes for the new pump, that you have to modify anything?
Nope, it'll, it'll, everything will come fit, ready to fit, just wiring, and we'll do that ourselves.
So, are you talking about the whole amount?
The new pump? The repair would be just under our regular expenses, budget-wise.
Okay, the eight hundred.
Eighteen, six, seventy.
Would be something we can request from USDA.
From USDA.
Okay.
Can you start that process?
Yes.
Get with her.
How many pumps down there, too?
There's four in that station, we run four, one of them is a complete backup that only has hand operation, you can only run it either on or off, it doesn't run through the SCADA or any of that, it tells us that it runs, but you can't control it in any way. So what we've done is we've taken that spare pump and wired it through the SCADA, so we're running on our normal three, so our spare that we just got a couple years ago is in use right now. And when we, when we get the new one, we'll put the new one in and keep, take, pull another old one. We've got one that's making a little noise bearing-wise, we had it serviced last year, we're gonna have it serviced next year again with that. Every other year that we talked. And, and once we do that, we'll evaluate that pump and see what, I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll make it to our evaluation, it's not bad. But that's our plan, that's why we're gonna take it and put it into, when we get our new pump, we're gonna take it and put it in the spare, it won't run, but, and then we can.
We'll hire it.
We'll have it as a spare. That's our plan.
So do we need to amend that amount from somewhere?
So, we have to put funds monthly into replacement account when we have the bonds, and so we do have a balance in that account, but more than adequate, so if you're gonna approve it, let's approve it to request the funds from the USDA from our, from our, what do we call it? Depreciation and replacement fund.
Okay.
I kept them out right through there.
Is there a motion to request the money as Peggy has described it, because I can't read it.
Yeah, go ahead and approve to go ahead and get the new pump.
And do they amend?
And then request the funds from USDA.
Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Approve, second it, Delmar, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, before you take off, I just have one question. Did we decide that Michael would be the representative to parents' can and water?
Hmm, I believe so.
Has he been to any meetings?
Not that I know of, I will, I will check into it.
Okay, because whenever he goes, I would have him come the next meeting, I would say.
Give a report or something, okay?
Okay.
Next week, I'm gonna be on vacation for the week, it was kind of poor timing, but I couldn't avoid it, I'm gonna go get a horse and stuff, and I'll be back, but spring cleanup, I know that's gonna put it short, but I can't. Be back for May if anyone tear a building down.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much.
So, can we go ahead then and get a motion to amend the budget for this pump?
Make a motion.
So, first, Rick made the motion, and Dave is the second to get the new pump.
Yes.
Okay, and so, did we hold on that, and that carried five and oh, I'm guessing?
And this is new?
Yes, this, this control, this is a.
So they need to.
So, 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 the motion.
Okay.
So, then. We need another motion.
Yes.
Dollar amount for her to request.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to amend and request those funds from the USDA depreciation.
I'll motion, second.
He's collecting on this, so we're gonna need the eight oh-two out.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a total amount of.
Yeah, it, yeah, it was gonna add the eight oh-two to the eighteen, six, seventy.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Rick made the motion, David, did you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Are we all good there?
Oh, okay, she sent me.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Oh, sign.
And then there's Roger, Roger.
Yep.
I'm Roger's page.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just thinking about that tube it's in, are.
Yeah, it's, same minute, it's got to rain on it, it's already started going in for long.
You're running, Roger.
Heard that. Pretty good, another two. But now it's closed in, it's better than it's ever been.
No doubt, my mind.
Won't be better for you in June, what, week?
June would be better, earlier the better, June would be fine.
Give me a week.
I'll give you.
Oh, your mic, see what do this?
Yeah.
Clear a week.
After with that, Delmar hammer, he'll be down there.
Did we ever get any rock put on the dam last winter?
Yeah, I put probably five loads on it, or something like that last winter, I put two loads on it this spring.
I couldn't remember for sure, I knew.
County worked it for us, and, and yes, it's got, I'm probably gonna take another load out on the corner where it's muddy, because it needs it. Salem's supposed to come and check with me, I'll try and get six-inch rock for the dam a little cheaper than what they have, since it's for the city and, he's, folks gonna meet with me. Hope I need a little break there.
Okay, so the dumpsters, you want to move them like up where the old sheds were?
You mean?
The dumpster, for the spring cleanup?
For the spring, we want to put it behind our shop, because they can come in one gate and come out the other.
Okay.
The broken glass, the bolts, and everything down there is horrible, and we, it'd just be better.
I think that's a good idea.
If it's, yes.
You just need to make a big sign to put at the park.
Yes, yes, and, well, it'll be lit up to where they can find it, I mean, we'll fix signs where they can see it.
Well, that'll keep the kids from crawling in them.
Well, there's a lot of broken, you'd be amazed how much broken glass down there.
There's a, I know.
Nails.
Nails and screws and bolts, yeah, so that's all, I, I'd like for us to vote on that, or whatever, get that done.
Take your feet already.
They don't even, they don't even have to vote on that or anything.
Okay.
I mean, oh, you've got to just put up a sign.
Okay, that, is that alright?
As long as your happy rugs were happy.
Yeah.
I, I just think getting the junk mess out from there would be great.
Yeah.
And, uh, mentally, you get any, you don't have to.
Pile it up and get it later and all that, I mean, it's all back there, and it's nobody's way but ours.
Yeah.
And we've made room back there, we have a lot of room, so it'll, everything will fit there nice.
Alright, so.
You got a sign made, or?
No, it's not for this year, it's for next year, because it's, this year's too close.
Oh, moving it next year.
You're still gonna have it at Miller Park.
Can I move it now?
Well, we couldn't see any reason you couldn't, we talked about it.
Probably gonna move it tomorrow, I'll probably get things going, yes, that's great, that, that'd be great.
You gonna move it, too?
Behind our building, that way they can come in one way and go out the other gate.
You just have to put something at Miller Park to tell them that it's at the city garage.
Yes, and I'll start the arrow this way, this way, and.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, it's too late, you know, for advertising, but yet, we knew that just a matter of.
Well, if you ever go down there when it's done, it's a mess, it's a mess, and the kids don't need to be in that, there are a lot of kids.
No.
And you can lock it up back at the city maintenance shed.
We lock it every night anyway.
You didn't used to be able to, so.
I've seen teenagers crawling in those things.
Yeah.
And my parents would be the first ones to say this, I got it.
You put signs up at the intersection?
I'll pay care of it all, to where they'll know where the dumpsters are at.
And one for city park, and.
Just.
I promise you, everybody gonna know where it's at.
Because that's where they go, so.
Yeah, that, that's a good deal.
Yeah.
I think it's a real good deal.
Yeah, sure do, sure.
Okay, it's good, that's all I need to hear, that's good.
And you wanted to talk to Peggy about hiring a couple part-time if there's money in the budget?
If we're money, but, uh, number seven, bearing for the swing set. I, we found them one place, and every bearing in that swing set is out, there's not a bearing one in none of them. Takes twelve and the three hundred seventy-four, three hundred seventy-one dollars, if you want to get them all and have, and just order.
For all twelve?
All twelve, three seventy-one.
I told you to go ahead and order them.
I, I know you did.
Because I said it's, it's repairs and maintenance in our work. And it's less.
There you go, you can order.
Number nine, uh, projects, so the stumps, if we have the stump people, is thirteen, sixty-six, seventy-five, and if you want us to get the skid steer, a grinder that cuts that for that, is two hundred and eighty-four dollars a day.
And you can grind them all in a day?
And that is if you all want them gr, I think we can do that in a day easily.
That's for better than fourteen hundred dollars.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking, I just.
You'll probably have it there anyway.
Exactly. But they're out there, and they really need to be. But they're out there and they really need to be gone with the guy in morning with hay and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And it would be a lot nicer.
So.
That's good?
Yep.
I would, okay.
So.
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that? Or is that just part of routine?
No, two eighty four.
Two eighty two.
Eighty four.
That's if we do it.
That's one day.
Yep, two eighty four, two hundred eighty four dollars a day.
How many stumps you got?
Two days, huh?
How many stumps you got?
Uh, thirteen. And I think it's. We start seven, we can do it. They're not huge.
They're soft tent.
And they're soft ash.
Do we need a motion to cover that, or is that just part of?
Is this all coming out of perks and recreation?
I'm sorry, I got.
Is this all coming out of perks and recreation, okay.
Okay.
So we're good.
Okay. So we can move that to the back, so that's, yeah. And then the page two, whatever, however, whatever. Back page is, uh, kinda figured out what it costs to have one or two higher if we could. Uh, this lady can tell us that before anybody can, I guess. So that's what, what I'm asking for.
How many did you have last year?
Uh, two. Uh, it, I'll be honest, with the trash as much as it is and what it does, it's, it's hard.
It takes two days out of your week.
Two and a half days.
Yeah.
Two guys.
Yeah, so that's happy proof.
Exactly.
Well, since we don't have the recycling, it's really.
Yes, it's made a huge, huge difference, like you all wouldn't believe.
Has he ever got ahold of you?
Now, cats never got ahold of me. When he gets ahold of me, I'll get ahold of you.
Cause I called him late, well, after I talked to you. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna call him, I'm gonna call him, I'll call him.
He's not called me at all.
Okay.
Yeah, he's not called me. But it's just hard, it's as much price as it is, and just like the guy called today about picking his dumpster up. If we leave a dumpster, it's because somebody's parked in front of it, we can't get it, and we gotta go back ten times or try and. And they call, uh, there's, if it's not dumped, it's because something was parked in front of it, it's no other reason than that.
Have they gotten better about not putting stuff in there that they shouldn't be?
Not all, but ninety percent is a whole lot better that way.
Good.
Yeah.
Good deal.
If you go with our employees, we will have to amend the budget, because we don't have that in there.
Okay.
You all are working on so many projects. Um.
Yes.
And, and I understand the need for that, um, so it's kind of a council decision. You know, we have a couple of funds that are. Are a problem, streets are, streets are one of them.
And we can knock this down maybe to three months.
If you could.
I can't.
If you could, that would help, and then, because I.
I can do that.
I certainly understand, I mean, we've talked about so many projects, and some of the things that you've got going. Um, that I can certainly understand the need for.
And we can knock the, I, I'm good with knocking this to three months.
Okay, so I would say that's.
To three man?
Three months.
Three months, for part-time help.
Mowing and. Considered seasonal help.
Yeah, mowing and running the trash truck.
Not really.
That gives me all of them, I can seal and, I can get it, and it will, if we all get together, we can do this real quick and. Well, I'll say real quick, we can get, it's a big summer, well, I got a big schedule for this summer. I, I don't know if y'all know it, Friday I get surgery, I'm gonna be off a while, but with that, Ty and Mike's gonna take the reins and help everything. I don't, I'll know and let you all know, let Margaret know when I can come back to work, because it's, cause he told me, I will let you come back sooner. If you play boss and don't we're doing anything. So if I'm there kinda directing, it, it, it helps a lot.
Well, yeah.
I'm gonna make sure he plays boss. And I already went through that back there.
Yeah.
Did Lucian ever get his CDL?
He has so much to do with the courthouse yet.
Okay.
He said, let me finish that all first and then I will do it. Yes, that's the deal.
Alright.
But, uh, one of the hires I'm looking at is eager to drive the trash truck and I'm ready to go.
Is he C D L like?
Has he C D L?
Oh, yeah, he's C D L.
Oh, okay.
He's an ex-farmer and a big farmer, so.
Okay.
And I had a question I wanted to ask about, uh, P P for the city workers.
Okay.
Um, I think that's something, if, I worked the railroad and safety's their number one priority. And I, I think if, if we provide good P P for our guys, it's just gonna prevent an accident.
Yeah.
And I asked Roger about what they have, and I think that's something we need to consider. You know, good leather gloves, steel-toed boots.
Goggles.
Safety glasses.
They can get gloves.
I was gonna say, you have to do those things. We pay for them.
And the boots, yes, and we pay for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's something you'll need to have on hand, that way, you know, glasses get broke, you can get a new pair, you don't have to wait to order some.
Gloves are there, they're, they're for trash trucking stuff, there's boxes in the truck they use all the time, we go out there. If they want gloves, they're there, they have them. So that is there, and the boots we bought them two years ago, I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, yeah, it's like.
So is that, do you have a budget for boots annually, or is that just one time?
Well, when you have new people come on.
Yeah.
Because, you know, boots don't last forever, so I, I think it needs to be, you know, at least every two years, get new boots. You know, especially if you're working around the hot oil and on the city streets and. You know, that's not gonna last long.
And yes, safety is important.
Yes, it is.
So, do you, do you have a budget to buy?
Not separate from that, we get it, and we, out of, well, probably, uh, the uniforms, which we take out of the street and water and sewer and trash. All those departments, because same guys are working all over.
And like, where he's talking, he works, they give them a hundred dollars a year, am I right?
Yeah.
A hundred.
For boots.
So, for boots, so that's, uh, and that's what Mota did, they give you a hundred dollars.
You go buy your boots.
To buy your boots.
We buy them.
They buy you.
We buy them.
Yes, and that's, but I'm saying, if we just did a hundred a year, that's not a bad idea either.
Cause I think they need to, yeah, I, I think, you know, a lot of guys, they're not gonna buy this stuff if they have to pay four dollar pocket.
Yeah.
That's why they could be.
That's why we send them down to Farm and Home and tell them to get.
Put a burger out, there you go.
Yeah, we buy them.
Be picking garbage up in their tennis shoes.
Yeah, that, that's, you drop something on your toe.
Yeah.
Hurts, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's where we're at.
Okay, so do we need, what do we need to do Peggy?
Um, we need to authorize him to hire seasonal help for three months for two people, is that what you're?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what you're looking at.
And we'll advertise.
Okay, is there a motion to let Roger hire two people for three months?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll sign it.
All in favor?
So, uh.
I.
Do we need to do any amending right now, or do we wait and?
Let's wait. We, we know when we get later in the year, we'll have to amend it, based on that decision.
Okay.
But right now, there's still funds in there, so.
Okay.
So I'm looking at June, July, and August, is what I'm looking at to do it with, is that alright?
Yes.
Good.
And, um. We may need to discuss what funds that's coming out, which departments.
We can do that, we can do that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Alright.
C N R, we're trying to get it done before I get out of here, I don't. Next to C N R sidewalk, if y'all notice, that's real deep there and you can't walk on it and, so we're gonna cut that out to make it go into the drop inlet. For concrete and everywhere, the water will flow a lot better and people can, at the church when they parker in the C N R, they, they don't have that big hump to go on.
Yeah, that's, yeah, like a preset drop off.
Uh, it's a bad drop off, so I'm gonna fix it while we're doing this, so. And then around the rest of it, it'll be all black top, it'll be smooth, all the water will go in there nice, and it'll be nice.
What's the thoughts on, uh, like? Got your code?
Uh. We've cut, we've tucked a lot of it up, no doubt, I mean, there, there's nothing to save, it's ninety percent of it broke anyway, there's none there, so. The bas- basement's cleaned out, the coon debris's gone.
Was there a hole in the roof?
There is not a hole, I don't know, if there's a hole in the eve.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna patch it right, well, probably before I leave. There, I've got a pretty good list that they're going off of this week, so.
Okay.
We're gonna try to get that for no more coons get in there, uh. There's probably one tree back there, the squirrels are jumping over on, and we've seen holes that they have made this spring.
Big oak.
Yeah, but it's about dead, so I'm gonna pull it and solve that problem, there's a lot of big oak back there, that one we're not, will not miss it. And the squirrels are jumping over there and they're ruining it quite fast. Yeah, and then, uh.
Have you looked at any pricing on, uh?
Yeah, Michael is putting it on, uh, computer, and we're starting to see what it looks like, and then we're gonna start pricing from there, and I'll bring that in. Which I have so much, so we'll go from there.
Okay.
I think the first thing we do is we're gonna take down the paneling, we're gonna see how much insulation is before we.
Yeah.
Do anything silly.
Good idea.
Where we're at.
Sounds good.
So, that's, that's where we're at.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, Dot?
No.
Hey, you can call me if you need me.
Sounds like you need to prioritize.
Yeah.
Getting well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm starting to get just a wee bit nervous.
Oh, yeah.
I am, I want it bad, so I'm not worried about it, but.
It's a big deal.
So, we get it.
Okay, well, thank you Roger.
Yes.
Keep us informed, let us know how you're doing.
Uh, uh, I'll go down and call Peggy or Margaret after work, so. Alright, that's all I have.
Thank you Roger.
Alright. I had copied Margaret and I sent it to Echo, so we've got some information about abandoned wells and who handles those, those are all handled through D N R. And they give us information about, they normally like them to be just filled with rock. But there's a form you have to get from D N R.
Yes, I'm.
So whoever fills it certifies if they fill it, you send it back into D N R and they'll give you a certificate that you took care of it. The guy I talked to was really nice, he said they're not out there to levy fines against anybody, they would rather the, the well get fixed than to find someone, so. His words were encouraging to just have them reach out and let, if you do have an abatement wall to get it fixed. Next I gave, copied Echo on it, so she's got the information, and I sent Margaret the information too on it of who to call, who to reach out to. And the process, but it sounded like it was a pretty easy process, and.
How many wells are in town?
I don't know. I know there was one.
I feel about five or six a year.
I know there was one over there kinda across from the community center in one of the houses that's gonna get torn down, and the city guys took them being fixed. I'm not sure if I really do that.
Depends how deep your well is, how much rock it takes to fill it.
I have one, I have one, I need them.
Did y'all wanna talk to you?
As long as they're covered, securely. The deal is, um, it's the plaster is like deteriorating.
Yeah.
And I really need to get something done, so right now, the art.
Yeah.
It's small holes, I mean, it's no child is gonna fall in it at this point, but I really need to get something done.
They said generally they just fill it with, they called it, what did he call it?
I used to hang a hill on.
But what, what it boiled down to was gravel.
I'll pump it out.
Yeah.
I pumped one there last year out here for.
But there's a, like I say, the guy I talked to is really nice.
And everybody thought we had water, like a rainwater, we had a hill.
Oh, yeah.
So, alright, our demolition grant, it is in environmental review, which they send it to D N R. A whole bunch of different places, they have up to thirty days to get back to us, he says, usually they reply faster than that, but it can do that. And as of April eighth, he had submitted it and was being reviewed. Once they get that back, we have a two to three week public comment period. And then we can get the authorization to use grant funds, and this is where we can bid, start bidding it to get a demolition inspector and an asbestos abatement inspector. And they will determine the asbestos, once those contracts are ordered, they'll determine the asbestos levels, and they will create the demolition specifications for each project. The how, each house or building. Which will be the basis for the final demolition and asbestos abatement projects. Then, when we then have to bid the final package and repeat the bid solicitation process. For a demolition contractor and asbestos abatement contractor, allowing two to three weeks for that step of it. And the last, I talked to him on three twenty six, he said it'll be three to four months before we're gonna be able to start bidding that out. Just because of all those steps you have to go through. And I asked him about the bidding it out to multiple contractors. His general reply was that unless there's a large number of buildings to be removed, they don't like to separate them out, they want one contractor. The one time that they did do that, they had over thirty-five buildings to be demolished, so they split that one. They have sixty to ninety days to get the project done regardless of how many contractors we have, so. Should it get done quicker? Yes, but that's not a guarantee that it'll get done quicker, cause they still have that deadline. We have, by law, we have to accept the lowest, most responsive, most responsive, most reputable bidder. They have to be bonded, insured, asbestos certified, and have references. So, all we can do is bid it out and whichever one is the most re- reputable. Lowest bid is what, according to their grant process, we have to accept. So, maybe by summer, we'll be able to start tearing buildings down.
I'll put it pretty late, yeah.
Yeah, they got sixty to ninety days to get it done, once, the, once they are awarded the contract.
To be sure, luck to have the buildings uptown down with the cornfield on.
I would like to see the buildings come first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this is. So it could be July, maybe August before they start, so. I guess in a realistic timeframe, if we start even in August, they should be able to get those two uptown down by then. At our last regional planning meeting, they were talking, there was discussion about available sidewalk monies different than what we had applied for before. So I took the list from what you guys had talked about last January and sent it to Chris, just to see what's out there. And how it would fit into what he was talking about, it's still an eighty-twenty match. But our twenty percent could be tearing out the old sidewalks, building the forms, doing the dirt work, it can be.
In kind.
In kind, it doesn't have to be actual money. So, he was gonna look at that and get back with us and see what was out there. And, talked about, you're gonna do the water plant, I'll let it as I got back. We talked about that. Did you guys still wanna do like a working meeting and talk about redoing the fine structure for derelict properties?
Do what?
Like the fines for derelict properties and all that?
Uh, we need to show.
Gave me no small one.
Well, I thought in, just throw this out there, I thought especially with houses that are renters.
What about the buildings that's all fell in? And the houses, roofs that all fell in, is there any way we can like condemn them, make them clean them up?
That I don't know, how, how you go through the condemning and then make them do that, but like the ones that can't get their garbage out. My thought was, let's raise it to a hundred dollars. Give them thirty days, but a letter will be sent to the renter and the landlord. And if the renter don't clean it up, you know, give them, increase it every month, by a hundred dollars until it hits three hundred, and then it goes to the landlord. And their fine's gonna be four hundred dollars, cause their renter didn't take care of it the first three months. But, but just a thought, we can schedule a working meeting and talk about, cause I agree, we need to do something that's gonna.
You have no doubt, there's three or four houses.
When it costs us more money to prosecute somebody, then there's no need to prosecute.
So when you talk about tracking like household trash, or?
Yes, there's some places in town, like they'll just throw the garbage in a pile out in the yard, or by the garage, and.
Or a swimming pool, or whatever they got.
Or they have, they can't have cars that are not licensed, that are not more able to be driven, you know, they can't be up on blocks, or.
So basically, it's our ordinance that we already have.
We just need.
And I need to email it to all of you, otherwise I can copy it if you don't have an email address, it's several pages long, so that you can look at it and decide how you're going to amend it.
Yeah. The actual ordinance isn't bad, it's just our fine structure.
Right, it would just be the.
We took somebody to court, the fines fifty dollars, our bill was more than that, they paid their fine, went on their way, and nothing happened.
The fine needs to be big enough they can't pay it, so they'll give them the incentive to clean up.
Yeah. So, we can decide on the time you guys wanna do a working meeting, or? What are, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
Well, I'll get the, I'll get the ordinance to them first, so they can look at it.
Is there?
You know, like vehicles, if they're not licensed, they, you get fined.
Mm-hmm.
It don't matter if it's drab or not.
Our license vehicles are included in.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a time that you would wanna do this, wanna wait a couple weeks? Do you wanna work on it after the next bea- at the end of the next meeting, we can just go into a work session?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, let's do that first.
Okay. Can we do that at the end of a meeting?
I have.
Adjourn the meeting and go into a work session?
Uh, yeah, anybody can stay, I mean, anybody can be here.
So, yeah, it's a public meeting.
Okay, then we will do a work session to work on fines, ordinances after the.
In May?
May. And we can do whatever we need to do, I, I agree, something, we need to do something.
Yeah.
That's the risk of success.
Get worse. No need of, it's like, the houses that's burnt, you know, the insurance covering that, like their insurance, as far as.
We don't got that.
We have.
Didn't that one that burnt up by us, wasn't that on the demolition list?
We have an ordinance for, uh, people that have insurance on them, but sometimes they don't have insurance, but anyway, uh, yes, it's, uh, we get
City holds a percentage.
Into the s- the state, uh, with the insurance, and, and so, we get to hold back, I mean, a certain amount is sent to the city, like ten percent of whatever their insurance is, until they get it cleaned up, and, and we have done that in the past, but if they don't have insurance, then that doesn't work so well, and it's like, it doesn't work at all.
Well, that's all I have, we can, Margaret will email us those, and we can think about it, and.
Yeah, and David, I, I need your email, you, you put it on things, but I'm just not real sure. I don't wanna say I can't read it, but I. And let's see, uh, Rick, should I just make you a copy?
Yeah, we may probably.
Yeah, and.
I don't email there, yeah. They might send there for months.
Don.
Don't send him a text either.
On one of your papers that you pulled out, did you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll have that. And Stacy, I've got hers, so.
Do you all have anything?
You got mine.
I've got yours, yeah, yeah, I'm mo- bothering you, I've got yours. Okay.
Don't lose it.
Dee, you? Okay.
Do you all have anything? Okay, well, we will take a roll call vote to, well, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Need a motion, if somebody wants to go into closed.
I made a motion to go into closed session.
David?
Dave?
I'll say that.
Okay, now we need a roll call vote, Don.
Roll call.
Vote yes or no to go in the.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick? Dot? Delmar? Alright, we are in closed session.
Not quite.